Okay, the time is seven o'clock. We're waiting on a couple of members, but they may show up here shortly, but we'll go ahead and get started, get the meeting going, so I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute. Do we have any additions to the agenda or declaration of ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias? None? All right, and we'll open it up for public comment. Got a statement I gotta read. The council will now receive public comment. We value the time and initiative of members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there's follow-up necessary, we will directly direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community, and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and city of residence. Please note the speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. Erin Frickel, did I say that right? Good.
Hi, my name is Erin Frickel. I reside at 12326 Golf Lane, Southeast Sublimity, Oregon. I got a couple of things I wanted to talk about. I just want to say I really appreciate the city council. I appreciate a forum to be able to come to and talk about different things that are on the residents' minds, but I have a couple of things that I'm concerned about. Had a recent exchange with a change in parking in the police parking lot. And from the interactions that I had with city staff, it seemed as though there needed to be possibly some de-escalation training. I think that that would possibly be a really good thing to be able to help, if not produce some empathy, but to help a situation get better instead of escalate it. I'm definitely concerned about that. I think I heard another exchange at one of our RDS meetings where we had an individual come and talk about a complaint that he has, and from my understanding, a lot of it could have been mitigated by a simple, hey, let's figure this out. Let's deal with this in a small-town manner instead of not addressing it. And I think that that's a concern of mine, that we don't want to get too disconnected from the way we can work out problems. And I think that that's really, I think that if you have a problem with somebody, the best thing to do is to take it to that person as opposed to letting it go to some other entity. And I don't know all the particulars about it, but it concerned me. I don't like to see things get to where they will be a potential lawsuit and be a tax implication for the taxpayer, so I think that that's a concern. But overall, I just, I love working with city staff, and I think that just some additional training and de-escalation, I think that it would be a really good thing and a recognition that when there's something that changes materially, a public use area, that the public should be consulted about it. The lot that I'm talking about is right next to the police station. We lost two public parking spaces there, and I remember growing up with the entire side of my building being public parking, so it's kind of hard to see that. And I grew up, I grew up in that parking space doing my homework, so my mom parked there before it was a two-hour limit, so anyways, that's what I have on my mind. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Erin. Next up, Lynn Hayes.
Lynn Hayes, State in Oregon, and I'd like to start this off with something I'd like to say nicely. The last time I was here, I mentioned some bicycle stop signs on Shaft Road. There were two on West Town Drive and Shaft, and right at the first drive-in, you know, to go into Buy Mart. Okay, well, the ones at West Town and Shaft, I just got back from a long vacation, and they have new stop sign stickers on them, very visual. Nice to see that. Though there's only one at the Buy Mart, and unfortunately, there is not a sticker on it, and that was actually the more important one. It's where there's the most danger there, and that's when I had an accident. My wife and I had an accident with a bicycle person who, you know, hit our car and then thought it was our fault until the police officer let him know, uh, why didn't you stop at your stop sign? So, that would've been it. So I'm just saying that one that's there at Buy Mart, it still doesn't have a new stop sign, you know, sticker right under the bicycle sign. And on the other side, again, I tell you, somebody hit that one at some point in time, and it laid there for quite a while. Well, it's been removed, but it still hasn't been replaced, you know? So whether or not it's sitting in the corner at the city shops, I have no idea, but it'd be nice to have it back because those, both intersections are real important in that. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Next up, James Loftus.
I'm the owner of the Gardner House Cafe and Bed and Breakfast. Most of you recognize me from being here about two weeks ago, maybe a month ago. I don't really recall. I've been busy. I'm the director of a microspace museum, so this is really low on my priority. However, I will never, ever back down from defending my rights, and I want you to understand council responsibility. You just stood up there and took the pledge of allegiance. That allegiance is to me, okay? Understand who the citizen is, and when a citizen makes a complaint, which I want to correct, I have not filed a complaint yet. Erin, it's not a complaint. I'll get to that if necessary. This could have been solved with a simple explanation. I have had no communications with the chief of police. I have sent her multiple emails. I have had my evidence suppressed. I have notified the RDS, and I'm now notifying you, constructive notice. I am opening up a citizen's inquiry to determine whether or not this is a pattern of behavior with our state and police department. If I find sufficient evidence, I'm going to bundle that evidence up with the witness testimony and turn it over to the FBI. Now, you have a choice. You're responsible for this community. You can open up your own inquiry. I have an understanding, and while it's all allegations, I have not talked to the person, but I was told that somebody who had a disability was violated because he couldn't hear. Now, I was on my property praying, asking God to heal me from my infirmaries, and Officer Beavins rolls up and unlawfully detains me for 27 minutes. Understand this, the law says only long enough to gather enough information to determine whether a crime has been committed. So the moment I told him I'm the owner of the property, what does he do? He attempts to coerce me off my property. Let that sink in. At about the 25-minute mark, because I don't have the video, I'm having to guess, Prindell and the sergeant show up. They had a duty to intervene and de-escalate, right then and there, okay? Then, under ORS 181A 681, they had a mandatory requirement to report this to the DSSP, to their supervisor, and to the chief of police. Now, they're gonna claim something different, that's okay, but all you have to do is go read State and Police Department Policy 3194.1, duty to intervene, okay? So we can also talk about Beavins wanting to, and this is an assumption here, so I'm just gonna give him the benefit of the doubt, but we have 300.3.5 accountability. We have--
So that's, you've exceeded three minutes, so you gotta finish up.
Okay, I'm done. I'm asking you to intervene, try to resolve this before we actually go any further, because I'm gonna pack the record every two weeks until there's a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Butler and Sandoval, I know I'm off the record here, but when I asked them about those policy numbers, and they're supposed to have read it, we're unaware of it.
Okay, Julie Boschler, did I say the name right?
You did.
Oh, good.
I asked to go as public comment under street fees.
Oh, okay. My apologies. We'll wait on that, that's coming up.
I want to hear the report first.
Next up, consent agenda, October 7th, 2024 City Council Work Session Minutes and October 7th, 2024 City Council Regular Session Minutes. What do we want to do with that?
Counselor Sims, although we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Just Counselor Patty, second it. Motion made, and seconding, it's approved, or--
All in favor.
Thank you. All in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Next up is presentations. Do we have any presentations?
No, we do not.
Okay, none today. And so, public hearing, general business. So we're ready to do, talk about the rental and use of city facilities?
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave it to you.
And we'll have James come up and present his staff report.
Good evening, James Brand, City Finance Director. This is Resolution 1119, and it will amend some of the rules we have governing the rental and use of our city facilities. So it wasn't long ago, in August, that we, you, this body approved Resolution 1112, and that added the ability to charge rent for some of our park facilities. And I just want to reiterate that parks are still free on a first-come, first-served basis, but we are allowing the public, some of them have requested this, but we're, so we're allowing reservations. People can pay a small fee and have reserved a few different places throughout the city parks, and they'll be able to reserve it for however many hours they wish. So this resolution is just amending those facility use rules that we have. It's not making drastic changes, it's adding those facilities by name that we've added, a couple at Pioneer Park, Saniam Park, those structures. We're also just cleaning up some language. We don't use police officers for security at rentals, so that includes like the community center and other events. We just don't do that anymore, so we've removed that. It changes a few of the terms that we have for deposits and the approval process by the city, because we've changed the structure there a little bit. And there's just basically some other minor changes, so this is a resolution that the city has, so we needed to go to this body just to clean up some of this language. So I think there's a time for public comment, and then I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this issue? None? So next is council discussion. Are there any questions on this? Do we want to make a decision on this?
Counselor Sims?
Yes, Counselor--
I move to approve Resolution Number 1119 as presented.
Motion moved and seconding. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, 5-0. All right, next up is streets survey presentation. Been looking forward to this.
Yes.
So I'll leave it to Julia for the staff report.
Thank you, and this is discussion primarily. Staff is going to ask for a little bit of direction from council at the end, and this is very, very similar to what we went through in work session, but I'm going to repeat it both for you as well as for the audience, and hopefully all those at home that are watching this. So we're doing, as soon as Melanie pulls that up. So I'll quickly, or I'll start it, because the first few slides are just talking anyways. We're doing this street discussion. The purpose is to do a quick review background of kind of where we've been, review the street survey responses, review analysis of responses and how they may inform street improvements, discuss our proposed approach or prioritization of improvement projects, and receive direction for the next steps to complete the street improvement projects for this fiscal year. And you can go to the next slide. So, quick background, in 2021 to 2022, we contracted with GRI, a consultant group, to complete a comprehensive assessment of the streets in Staton. At that time, they found that 40% of the streets were in poor or very poor condition and identified more than $30 million in deferred maintenance. The city at the time was spending about $450,000 a year on street maintenance, and I don't think it says this within this, but just as a reminder, that the recommendation from GRI was that in order to maintain the streets in the condition they were at, we needed to actually spend about $900,000 a year on street maintenance. So in 2021, we were spending about $450,000. 2022 to current, actually, FCS Group, another consultant group, was contracted to complete our utility rate study for water, sewer, storm, and streets. In December of 2022, council received an overview of the rate study, and then had additional discussions in January 17th and March 6th of 2023. Council received a presentation on the revenue requirements for streets and began discussion of what meeting those requirements might look like. Next slide. Oh, this is really hard for anybody in the audience to see, but we'll have this up on our website so people can zoom in, but I'll go over it as well. Basically, the initial assessment, we looked at some different options for street improvements from maintaining the current budget to maintaining the current pavement condition to doing some improvements, and all of those were pretty not great from a budgetary standpoint as well as what we could achieve, and council provided feedback to staff to dig deeper and identify options, including looking at other funding options. To, for the audience, so basically, in 2021, 22, our street fee for residential homes was $2 per home per month, and based on different scenarios, they all were going up. The one we were kind of looking at most closely was ramping up to spending about $2.5 million on street improvements, which would have required increases in the street fee from $2 to $4 or $4.60 in 2022, 23, increasing all the way up to 2026, 27, to as high as $60, and that's why council was like, $2 to $4 may be okay, but $2 to $60 might be really challenging for some folks. And council made it clear that more public input was needed to advise on what streets we focused limited funds on and whether increases in funding via fees or taxes was supported. Next slide, please. In March and April of 2023, staff met with counselors to discuss a variety of funding options. We got some direction to explore what rates might look like if it was a $10 million bond, and we kind of looked at some scenarios based on that. In April 2023 through 2024, we've actually been meeting with FCS Group to discuss options. We went back out to GRI to update the assessment, and they provided several alternative scenarios based on a $10 million bond to kind of help focus. And staff has been working on the analysis and funding recommendations and an outreach plan. In April of this year, staff provided an overall memo to council that included all the street conditions and provided an overall summary of how big the picture was. Included in that memo, next slide, please, is just a summary of the street conditions and the deferred maintenance, and really wanting to highlight that while we have, the majority of our streets are actually in very good in terms of miles, the cost to improve them to satisfactory conditions is actually the lowest, and it's more cost-effective to focus on the streets and keeping them good than it is to allow them to deteriorate to very poor or poor condition. If you look at the cost, the average cost per mile to fix and maintain, a very good street costs about $92,000 to maintain. Good is about $950,000, but once you start to deteriorate into poor condition, it goes up exponentially, 1.5 million to repair a poorer street and about 2.6 million per mile to fix a very poor street. And so that's just kind of to understand the context that we're dealing with. Next slide. We went out for public input, we had a survey, well, sorry, let me repeat myself, or go back. We wanted to get public input, so we began an education campaign. We sought input from the public. We had a survey that was opened from June 18th to August 14th. That survey was shared in the city newsletters, e-newsletter. We had a QR code with flyers in businesses around town. We shared it on our website and through social media. We boosted or shared the information on social media 23 times. We had about 4,000 views of that survey. We also held ice cream socials where information was shared about the survey as well as other conversations, and we only received 165 survey responses, which was disappointing, given how much effort we did and how much we got for other surveys, but not entirely surprising given the complexity of the topic. And so, you know, we will use that information. I think it still is very helpful. So next, I'm gonna dive into the survey results. We had a question on how people use the streets. 98% of the respondents use their personal vehicles, 63% walk, and 18% bike. Your packet does include the entire survey results, that includes the other and all that stuff, so this is just a overview summary. We also asked people how they would rate the quality of the street. 53% of respondents rated the overall condition as poor or very poor. 33% rated the streets as neutral. Shockingly, 14% rated them as good, and no respondents indicated the streets were very good. As far as how respondents felt about the safety, do they feel the street condition or environment is unsafe? 23% indicated the quality of the street does not make them feel unsafe. 53% said that it sometimes makes them feel unsafe, and 22% said that it does make them feel unsafe to travel on. Next slide, thanks. We asked about how people felt about different options for increasing funding. 60% supported grants, 38% supported transfers from the general fund, 33% supported adjustments to the gas tax, 29% supported urban renewal, 28% supported adjusting the transportation fee. A bond or a loan was actually the least supported at 17%, and then we got some, just in general, the others, we had a lot of others, and I would say that we had a pretty good theme on the other of no new taxes or using existing funds differently, and then a lot of support for the federal and other grants. So, next slide, please. So the takeaways from that information for staff, and forgive me, I'm reading my presentation, and it's dark, and my words are very small, so I may or may not be able to read them. So there was strong support for using existing general fund dollars to support street improvements. We do think that there needs to be continued education for residents on how our dollars are being used. I think, you know, as we saw through the budget process, you know, there might be opportunities to push some more funds to streets, but it's not the silver bullet answer, and I think that we need to do more to help the public understand how we're using money that is, you know, we're not, we don't have a lot of fluff in our budget, and so we need to make sure that we're continuing to share that information with the public so that it's better understood. There was strong support for some adjustment to fees. 78% supported adjustment to the gas tax, street fee, or a bond, so while there was not necessarily that much for each one, there was some support and understanding for the need to increase funding. Safety-- Go ahead.
I'm sorry, so just on that strong support for some adjustment to fees, I just do have a question about that, if that's all right.
Sure.
I hate to pause you in the middle of this, but 78%, that's a really tricky number to throw out there. So are you saying because somebody could have selected one, because you can select multiple, right?
Yeah, that's true.
So it wouldn't be necessarily that 78% of the people who took the survey supported one of those three things?
That is probably a fair assessment.
Right, so I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that, sorry.
Thank you. Safety is an important factor when designing improvements, and then the highest level of support was, as far as like which, how we focus our money, the highest level of support was 67% of the funding towards rehabilitation and 33% towards reconstruction projects. So based on all of that, that we got, that we heard, as well as what our current code says, and just sort of staff knowledge and experience, we're recommending prioritizing projects in the way the table is shown. So basically, the first priority project would be arterials and collectors that are at risk from going from good to poor and in residential areas. The second priority would be arterials and collectors that are at risk from going from poor or very poor, or local streets that are at risk from going from good to poor and in residential areas. The third priority would be local streets that are in poor condition, and then fourth would be local streets in very poor condition. And then fourth would be local streets in very poor condition. And so, and that's consistent. So the municipal code prioritizes arterials and then collectors, and I don't have the other ones in front of me, but it's like high volume, so there's a priority down to, you know, even gravel streets. So this is more detailed, but generally consistent with what's already in the municipal code. So we took that concept and we sorted the streets that we received, that every street that GRI did their inventory of, and we sorted arterials and collectors in residential areas and that were identified at risk of decline. And so that is in your packet, I'm going to show it in just a second, that's in your packet as that's the table that rose to the top. And I'll, again, I'll show it in just a second. The cost of those projects alone are over $10 million. So next slide, please. So this this list here is the streets that are arterials or collectors in residential areas at risk of decline. And that's $10 million. Our budget for next, or for this fiscal year, we have about $800,000 identified for street improvements. And so we need to get direction from council on which of these projects we focus on first. And ultimately, we're going to want direction on what else we do next. But next slide, please. My recommendation is that we not look at Washington Street or Ida Street this year. The reasons are that Washington Street might be something that could be addressed through urban renewal dollars more easily if we end up going and forming an urban renewal district. And then Ida Street is just still in a state of construction that I think that is a very good contender when we are done with the sewer improvement project, but not for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. So what we're trying to get council to focus on are sort of some some bucket projects to consider that are highlighted on this slide, which include Gardner from Shaft to Washington. That's actually a little bit more than we have budget for. But we, you know, there might be some options. I haven't talked specifically to James for this year, but it could potentially carry over into the following year if we're not able to construct it all this fiscal year. Kendall Way is another contender. There are some street improvements, but there's also the opportunity to actually build Kendall Way out using system development charge dollars. So that could be a potential project that we're both doing some street improvement, but also some street completion there. Another sort of set of potential projects would be Hollister from First to Fourth, or from First to Seventh. Another one would be North Third from basically Fern Ridge to Elwood. And then West Town from Shaft, basically the entire length of West Town. There's like a point where there's some pavement change and the road is good, but it's a pretty short section. So this is actually new to council. I didn't share this with you guys at the work session, but I talked with our operations supervisor, our public works operations supervisor about this to see, are there roads here that are like more problematic, better? We don't want to be paving a new road and then having, you know, significant waterline improvements or issues that come up. And so he actually looked at these these roads and highlighted roads that sort of didn't have any any issues or concerns with waterline. I think that basically it's, they're good, they're the right kind of waterline where if there is a leak, it's an easy to fix leak. It doesn't necessarily cause additional problems. There's some lines that, you know, I think it's the galvanized lines. If you fix a leak in one place, you're basically just, you almost need to replace the entire line because it's just going to continue further down the line. And based on that information, that really led me to recommend West Town. West Town has two sections that are, have no waterline upgrades necessary, and then the other two, the other few sections actually have some moderate, whereas there are others that have significant waterline upgrades, and we haven't budgeted for significant waterline improvements. And so for this fiscal year, my recommendation is to focus on West Town. So that's, that's my recommendation. So next slide, and I kind of cut to the, or cut to the chase. So tonight, we really are hoping to get some direction to staff on projects to move forward for this fiscal year with the $800,000 that's budgeted for street improvements. And as I said, my recommendation is West Town because of the underlying infrastructure and also by doing one large section, it could be more cost effective for mobilization versus doing little little bits and pieces. And then also the available budget, that would be basically within the budget that we have available with some leftover to do some design work potentially on another street. Either tonight or in the very near future, we we would like input on the framework that I discussed. Also, we would like input on the five-year capital improvement plan that was included in your memo. That's certainly up for discussion and can be, could be and should be looked at every year, just to kind of like make sure there's nothing new, nothing changed, but it's a good framework. And then we will also want direction on the street fee. If you recall, when we did the fee schedule updates, I believe staff proposed to go to $8 from $4 to $8 to kind of keep us on pace with the maintaining the current pavement. But council chose not to at that time because we were still in the process of having discussions. And so we will need to get direction from staff on a potential increase to the street fee to accomplish more projects so that we could get closer to that aspirational capital improvement plan. I think that is it. I feel like I rushed through that, so please let me know if there's anything you want me to touch on in more detail.
There's probably going to be a lot of questions. So I'll let the public comment go first, and then we can
Okay.
go right into questions, because I know I have some.
Julie Bockslar, 1660 Mount Jefferson Drive in Stateon. Sorry.
Lights on.
Is it all right if I go? Okay. So I heard about the street fee. I recently read an article in the paper that Albany had increased their water fee for streets from up to $16 on their monthly bill. And I would like to see Stateon do the same thing, not go from four to eight, but go from four to 16. That increase would be like $320,000 extra dollars per year for you to spend on maintaining roads. But I would also like to see that all of that increase goes to contractors of the road, no administrative costs, engineering fees, that kind of thing. Try to get it so that if you're asking citizens to pay for a good street or street improvement, that the money actually goes there. I'd also like city council to think about making a street commission with volunteers. You have several people in our local community, Jim Huddleston, retired APAO Oregon Asphalt Paving Association president. He was there for many years. He also worked on mixed designs at ODOT. Jeff Gower, who, Jim lives actually in the city on Pine Street. Jeff Gower lives outside the city limits, but with a state and address. He's retired ODOT uppity up that worked on paving of all roads. You have my husband, Ron Bockslar, North Saniam Paving. These three gentlemen together have over 100 years working in asphalt, and I think they would be a really good volunteer group. You know, maybe you get someone from Knife River or another corporation, but they'd be a solid group to help you decide what roads should be improved, how they should be improved, and it would be free of charge, not from Portland, not from some other outside company that we pay money for. So I'd love to see you create a street commission, and then they can help you decide where and how to spend the money and get the most bang for your buck. They even might know some ways for you to find other funding. So use your citizens. And thank you for all the hard work you do, because I know you are also all volunteer. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That was really good. Ready to open it up for questions? Oh, correct. I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Are there any more comments? Come on up.
Aaron Frickel. One of the things that was identified in there was the idea of focusing on making sure that things don't go from good to like more of a moderate category. And one of the questions I have with that, I know it's, it's a, it's a shell game of where you place your money, but the idea of, I think the vast majority of people, when they think of our streets as being poor, they point out the really bad ones, and they point out the potholes, or they point out the major problems. And I'm thinking that if we don't address those like proactively, they obviously get worse. And I don't know exactly where the money comes from, but I'd love to understand if there has been an effort to to find those grant dollars, according to the survey that was very, very highly thought of by respondents. And, you know, obviously, you could potentially have larger amounts if you had grant dollars. But if we if we ignore the the major problems, then I think it's going to be something that people are constantly thinking that it's poor and not seeing the actual improvement that's done. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? None? Okay, I'll open it up for questions from the council.
Actually, if I can just add, based on the feedback that we received, I just want to remind the council, because it was not in the presentation, of what we are trying to do, the strategy. It's not just about the street fee. We're also doing a state, we received federal funding for a Safe Streets for All planning grant that is going to essentially assess the entire city from a multi-mobility standpoint, from, you know, how to, you know, do people feel safe? Are they really unsafe? Do they feel unsafe? And the idea is to identify a prioritization list of projects for improvement that we anticipate being intersection improvements, potentially sidewalk improvements, hopefully street improvements. And that project, when that's complete, will get us positioned to apply for Safe Streets for All construction funding that our lobbyist is sort of hoping, like he said, even as much as 15 million. I don't know if that's true. But so we, that is another strategy that we're working towards. We also have looked at potentially urban renewal as a mechanism to help fund those local streets that are less likely to get grants. You know, a lot of grants are going to be more on the arterial and collectors as well. We also are always looking at, are there community development block grant dollars? Are there other things out there? I know Jennifer was recently attending a webinar, and I haven't touched base with her about the details of, are there green streets grants that could be used for pilot projects that would allow us to do some things? So we are definitely looking at grants, but that is, again, there is no silver bullet. I think it's going to be a multi-pronged approach that includes that, you know, looking at grants, doing all that we can, fees, as well as utilizing some of the general fund as we have been doing in in recent years, is allocating a little bit more from the general fund towards street improvements. That is, that is now all I would like to say at this moment.
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah, definitely those grant dollars. All right. Anybody have any questions? Counselor Julia?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Intern, what do we call you again? I forgot.
I think I'm still council president.
Council president? All right. Mr. Council President. Yeah, so I just had a couple. One was for this, it's kind of jumping a little bit off the comment that was made, but so for this list of streets, what's the breakdown in terms of using money for reconstruction or rehabilitation? Is that, was that percentages based off their survey results, or is that independent from the survey results? How did it, how did that end up?
Part was not, I mean, it's just basically, this is the list, so it wasn't a breakup. So how you choose to provide direction to projects from this list could be informed. And I would say that West Town is heavier reconstruct, so it's, if you're looking at those five projects, three are reconstruct and two are rehabilitation, essentially.
Absolutely. I absolutely understand the logic of preventing things from going from good to worse or worse to worser. And I actually think, maybe we could break up the, are you okay if we break up the conversation into two steps, Council President, to almost have a conversation around this first fiscal year, like the action they're asking us to take now, and then some of the questions around those other list of soon objectives? Because I feel like I'm tempted to kind of jump into a lot of things, but I don't know if we want to just limit to that first question of like, I don't know.
So you want to start out with what we want to do now?
Yeah, I'll just say this.
Yeah, that's, that's probably
Yeah, I'll start with just what I agree now. I will say, because I think time is is short this year, and because I do like the idea of reconstructing, and I think West Town's a good option, I am, I'm in favor of moving forward with West Town for this fiscal year and having that as a tentative list for kind of the beginning of next year. Yeah, I'll just, I guess I'll just start there.
One question I had about Gardner Street. I couldn't actually read the slide, but was that one that had issues with with the water pipes and that sort of thing underneath it? Because that's one of the ones you had on on Table 1, and I, that was one that I was thinking about, might be the good
Yeah, Gardner has moderate, he said had moderate upgrades. So it's not, not nothing, but not the worst. The challenge with Gardner is that it's identif, so we might not be able to do the whole section, I guess, if, because we only have the 800,000. While we do have some money in unallocated, we don't have the money in contingency, and we can't spend it this year. But that doesn't mean that we can't get it designed and then do, you know, $800,000 worth this fiscal year and have a little bit more. So that's certainly an option if you chose to do Gardner. I mean, we would figure out how to make it work within the budget.
What about the 294,000 in the, in the general fund that we voted for during the Budget Committee to use on streets?
So, James, do you want to come up here and speak to that? I believe that was, it's a question of whether or not it was put in unallocated or contingency.
It's in contingency. It is available this year. I believe it's 295.
Okay.
Excellent. So we could do the Gardner project with the, with those extra funds.
Yes, we would only be able to do the Gardner project.
Right, okay.
And the other sort of unknown is that we need to look at what the waterline costs would be, because there isn't money in the water budget. So we'd have to see how much it is and if there's enough in contingency, or how we could potentially, we might be able to, because we have a large amount allocated for the ASR project that we're not going to likely spend all this fiscal year. So we might, we might be able to do that, but we need to look at that before. I mean, if that is the direction council wants to go, we
Sure, I was just thinking, I was just thinking out loud, because Wes, there's nothing wrong with doing West Town. West Town needs it too, so. Counselor Rort?
Thank you, Council President. So Wes, I mean, I'm just doing like rough math here, but West Town, if we did all these streets, that's like Okay.
Because I did the math, because I knew somebody was going to ask that.
I was like, that's a rough estimate. So that's not all of the money, and then including that 295 that we have. We still have $500,000 approximately. I mean, I like the idea of the West Town. I like that it has the reconstruct in there. And those are And those are roads that a lot of our community members use as residentially do. I mean, I understand that it's not considered a residential street, but it is a residential area. So I like that idea, but I'd love to see us try to do more if we did. I don't know if those are the only ones that you were told that don't have a lot of.
So the ones that actually don't have any water line issues are Fern Ridge, but I know from prior conversation, that may not be the, you know, just because it's not really in residential areas. And then Kendall Way was actually another one that didn't have any. So we certainly could do West Town and then really dig in and do the Kendall Way design rehabilitation and the actual construction of Kendall Way.
Yeah, I do like the Kendall Way, just because we are going to be putting a park back there also.
Counsel President?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, sorry. I think I lean more towards the reconstruction type projects. So what about, in terms of water line issues, what about Hollister or the North Third?
So East Hollister from first to fourth was extensive water line upgrades. Hollister, fourth to seventh was moderate water line upgrades. North Third, Robidoux to Elwood, was moderate upgrades. And North Third from Fern Ridge to Robidoux, is it Robidoux or Robidoo, Robidoux, was extensive.
What if we, what if we did, because you can just do one of these sections of roads, right? What if we did West Town and then the North, like started working on the North Third from the Robidoux to Elwood? Because we would have money for doing all of that, right? I guess I don't know how much the water.
Yeah, I don't know, but we certainly, we need to work, reconstruct is going to have more design work, and so that could certainly be something that we allocate some funding to do design.
That makes sense.
And you know, honestly, if we did that, you know, maybe do design of all of North Third and construct what we can when we have the money, you know, that, you know, once you have a design, you might be more ready to apply for grants. There could be other opportunities. So that's another option. And generally, design is about 10 to 15% of the actual, of the estimated cost of construction, just to kind of keep that in mind.
Counsel Rort?
That was going to be my question. Because it's hard to try to figure out, it's because this doesn't happen in a vacuum.
Right.
Right? So it's, we do have to consider these other facts.
What, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Counsel Julia.
What about 10th? What's the water thing on 10th?
That is moderate.
Counsel President Sims?
Good, Counsel McGowan.
I think I'm with you, actually. I think we need, I definitely agree with looking at West Town. I think that's a good improvement. The other one I would, interchangeable with North Third, to be honest, but I think West Town's a good option, especially with as much reconstruction as going on there. And then I like Kendall Way, too. Just getting as far as we can on Kendall Way, you know, making a push. I know there's limited time left in the year, but I think, like you said, with the park improvements we're looking at down there, you know, getting that redone and fully improved also with sidewalk and all that that's going to happen, I think that'd be a great addition if we can squeeze it in. That, to me, is a big impact. So that's the way I would lean.
Yeah, that's kind of where I lean, is West Town and Kendall Way, myself, but it's up for discussion.
So, just another thing I'll throw out. So we're just looking for direction, and I think you guys have helped narrow this quite a bit. I know Counselor Patty hasn't spoken, so I'll throw this out, and then he can say, you know, can respond to that if he wants to. I think maybe what we do is move forward, kind of thinking about those three in mind of like, West Town is definite, Kendall Way, maybe, you know, like move forward with that, and then see how far we can get with North Third, and kind of see, you know, is it, do we have the money to do those others and, you know, and design of North Third? Like, let's just kind of pencil it out, and that gives us a little bit of room, so we're not bound to a specific project, but we can kind of see how far we could get.
Counsel Patty?
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, staff, thank you for putting this together to have during regular session and before the public. When we had previously talked about this, that was my wish, is that we could have this conversation in front of everybody so that we could hear from the public. And I just want to say, Ms. Boxler, it's very refreshing to have you come up here and kind of give some input there on that. And so, thank you. The other thing is, I like the ideas that we're coalescing around on West Town. I also just want to be encouraging here, you got to spend a little bit of money on design and things like that to go ahead and get some of these projects through. And so I too share frustration on that, and the administrative costs on that, that is frustrating. But I do like the idea of getting together some design plans, like to see Kendall Way improved. That would be my priority, since we've gotten this grant money from the state. I'd like to go ahead and see through some improvements in that area. So West Town, definitely. Kendall Way, definitely. Those would be my priorities.
Counsel President?
Counsel Julia?
Yeah, that sounds great to me. And I'm kind of wondering if we might even be able to, because I would almost like to see North Third and Hollister, like next year, as kind of the design, as the things that are designed and planned out, because that'll, because I feel like West Town's on one side of town, Third, Hollister's are kind of on the other side of town, which I kind of like as well. And Kendall Way is also kind of in that West Town area. So if we do Kendall Way and West Town, you have a couple of streets on that side of town, but then to do something Third and Hollister, I feel like that's kind of in another area of town. So I'd like to maybe focus in on doing design and focusing on maybe those streets for the next, for the next year.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's time to spread the wealth about it. Counsel Rort?
Thank you. Is it possible, like for these roads, sorry, let me talk into the microphone, is it possible for these roads particularly that have more than moderate, even moderate, but I think it's important for us to understand what the impacts of all the infrastructure needs underneath these roads are going to be. And this has been kind of the hang-up a lot of the times when we've been talking about roads, since I've been on the council, is, well, we can't, not that we can't, but we don't want to build a road and then have to, you know, cut into it again to fix these things underneath. But then that's where the conversation has stopped, and has been like a, kind of a source of frustration for me, because I'm like, okay, what are we going to do about it then? And then that never seems to happen. So it's like, okay, we can't, or we shouldn't do these roads right now because of this, but I want to see how, how are we going to be able to eventually get to these? So if we're not making a plan for that, or we don't know how much it's going to cost, then we're just sitting here kind of guessing. We're talking about moderate improvements to these water lines, but I don't even know what that means in terms of dollars.
Right.
You know, so I mean, moderate sounds good, but.
Sounds better than extensive.
It sounds better than extensive. So that's, I guess, promising, but it is a little bit more helpful if we have all those pieces to make that decision.
Understood. And I don't have the information for you at this moment. What I would say is, moving forward, so if council says that we want to move towards Hollister and North Third for next year, and we're doing West Town and Kendall, and we're working towards the design of those other roads, those, we'll know that information as we get into the design, right? So we'll have that information, we'll budget that information, or we won't. And we'll say, gosh, we'd love to do this, but the water line's going to cost X much dollars. We don't want to move forward with the street because we don't have that money for water. And then at least we know how much we have, and we have something to work towards, versus just not doing it and not designing it and not knowing what that number is. So I think for this year, knowing where we have upgrades is important for me. Moving forward, that is informative, but it's not necessarily the deciding factor, because, you know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of other issues and other things. But then again, going back to the, if all, if everything else is equal, let's go with the stuff that doesn't have other costs associated that we haven't budgeted for. But as we move forward, we can, like you said, plan and have more information.
Julia, does that give you direction for immediate?
It does. So what I, what we will be working towards is trying to get West Town done this fiscal year, getting either Kendall Way done or very far down the road this fiscal year, and then seeing where we're at, and if we can, beginning design work for North Third and Hollister, that would help inform the budget process for next year. And then we still have other things that, you know, that we'll need to discuss for, like the capital improvement plan. So I don't know if you guys want to move on to the next, the next question on my list, or if you want to be done for the evening and come back to the soon.
What does council want to do? Do we want to talk about the five-year plan, or that might be a work session in itself?
I'm okay having an initial, starting to have an initial conversation around it.
Okay, yeah. Good.
But I don't know what other people are thinking, so.
Counsel Rort?
Thank you. I just want to say that I agree with the community members out there that, asking for a roads board, and I would really like to see that happen, if you guys are in agreement with that. And I am very excited to hear that there might be some people that are potentially interested in being on that board. So that would be, that I think would actually kind of go along with this topic of a five-year plan.
I'm very much in favor of a roads commission. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, can I ask, I'm jumping down to number four, for the street fee. I talked about this in the work session, but I'd really like to see a conversation surrounding putting money from the general fund, and we could talk about what that looks like or how much. But I'm interested in putting some general fund dollars towards the street fee, or excuse me, towards our street budget, along with that conversation. I'm not going to say before, but along with it, because we talked about this in the Budget Committee, those are also dollars that people have paid. And then the street fee, it's all coming, they come from separate buckets, it looks like, but they all come from the same people. So people who are paying the street fee also own property. They're all, it's all coming from the same money. So I will, and I've heard from other community members, along with the survey, that people want money from our general fund to go towards that.
Counsel President?
Good.
Yeah, I would just agree with that as well. I would probably, I'd probably add that I think, yeah, I guess along with is fine in terms of, but I think until there's like a solid number and a solid plan, I wouldn't be a yes on any further increases to street fees. Yeah, because I think that there has to be an incentive for, and I think this is something that was discussed even in our last work session about tying, whether that's tying franchise fees or doing something. But I think there needs to be some sort of long-term general funding plan that we need to have before we increase the street fees. And I also do think, just based on the survey results, that in general, I do see more support for that, for rebudgeting and making maybe some cuts elsewhere, as opposed to raising additional tax dollars. Yeah. And it's not that I'm against any raises in the street fee, but I would want to see, I mean, we were able to get 300,000 this last year, right? And so we think about how much that is, even when it comes to like a street fee, it's about the same as $16. So, yeah.
So you're saying a plan where we set aside a certain amount for the general fund each year?
Yeah, I'd want, I'd want.
So we're going to dedicate this amount?
That's right. I'd want an ongoing, like this is our functioning strategy. And I think that's really what we need, just collectively, is the full-on funding strategy, right? So we know, okay, are we going to do urban renewal or not, is kind of also one that's in the throes as well. But I think those two things, to me, go together, on the general fund and the street fee. You can't necessarily say we have all the pieces at once, but if we, if we get those, that would be, to get me to a yes on the street fee, I would need to know what the general fund is.
Counsel McGowan?
Yeah, I think, and maybe, maybe, don't get up yet, James, but if I remember this year from our Budget Committee discussions, we looked at our kind of overall fund picture and the health of every, every one of our funds. And the general fund was one that wasn't really in an ideal position. And we were looking at ways to increase the health of the general fund, and looking at, you know, in a general picture, the feeling was that, you know, with the increased costs, you know, increased administrative fees and the cost of, the increasing costs of the police department, which is the biggest one that comes out of the general fund, and all these other things that we were, it wasn't really recommended to us to additionally take money out of the general fund because if it's, of its general health in the first place. So that being as it is, I think we need to decide, I think we're kind of looking at this, Counsel Julia, I think what you're kind of looking at is a little bit backwards. We need to look at other revenues of, other avenues of income before we look at the general fund, because the general fund in itself, you know, we don't want to start depleting those coffers in a planned direction until that fund in itself is in a better, healthier place. That being said, I think the street fee is the first thing we do, is the first kind of bullet we have to fire. And to get that in a more reasonable place, a more comparable position to other cities, a more kind of, it's kind of the simplest action we can take to increase the health of our street fee, street fund. And so I think I've said before, I had supported it going to 10. Ms. Boxler says, suggested 16, you know, that's a big jump. But as I had stated previously, I think, you know, 10 or 12, I think is a reasonable amount. I think that's not an enormous giant impact to any individual household. So I think we need to pull that lever as a beginning, as a start. Then look at urban renewal next, because I know that's, that can, that's a, that can be a big impact, depending on how we design it. And then if we pull all those levers and we still feel like the street fund needs more to catch up with all this deferred maintenance that we have, then we look at, okay, what do we need to do to get the general fund in a better place so that it can afford to make? do we need to do to get the general fund in a better place so that it can afford to make these transfers into the street fund? Because my impression was, and I don't remember all the details, it's been a few months now, but that was the recommendation from staff and from our accounting department, and then is that we really don't want to make any transfers in the general fund at this point based on its current funding amounts and funding levels.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, just, I agree with everything you just said. I really appreciate you speaking up and speaking your mind on that. I also remember that that transfer from the general fund came with a list of limitations to capabilities for the financial year or whatever. For me, I guess what I would like to see from my fellow counselors, who have voiced some ideas about these, these transfers, where within the fund they'd like to see that come from and what limitation that they're comfortable with for the budgetary cycle. Because for me, I think I'm where Counsel McDonald is on this, I don't, I feel like we're up against a wall. And at this point, we know what we have to do, and we have to have the political courage to go ahead and do it. And that's, that's what I'm going to go ahead and encourage everybody at this diocese to do here.
Counsel President?
Counsel Julia?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to that. Yeah, I totally get the concern that's, that's on this side, and I completely appreciate that perspective. I think, I think it's just two different perspectives. The, the, the cuts that I'd be asking for are actually very similar to the same cuts that we made this year, right? Which, yes, they were, there were cuts to some operating expenses, but they were not cuts to core essential services that the city provided. And that was upwards of, it was almost $3,000, $300,000 that was able to be provided into an essential service, which is the streets. And so that's, that's the reprioritization that I would like to see in our budget, is to prioritize essential services, which I see as streets. And then once we have taken the dollars that the, the people, our citizens have already spent on taxes towards those essential services, and that's actually what I'm looking for, is about the $300,000 on an ongoing basis as a, as our plan moving forward, then, then I'm fine, it's actually exactly what Counsel McDonald, I would actually agree with your assessment, that we have the reverse approach, right? I'm, I'm, I am for saying we need that money first, and then we look at the street fee, then we look at urban renewal, and you're saying we look at the street fee, and then we look at urban renewal, and then we look at the general fund, which is just, I think, two different philosophies. And I totally understand the hesitancy. But when it comes to me, when it also comes to the general fund as well, I don't think that we're signing a contract when it comes to the general fund. I think there's going to be a year-by-year assessment still. There's just a general operating principle that this is, this is what we're, this is the plan, this is how it usually operates. So if we're in a situation like COVID or something like that, where things have to change, we can adjust accordingly, which is what happened under COVID. But generally, when it comes to these projections, and when it comes to the actual year payout of a budget, and James does a fantastic job, is a wonderful job, and he's doing his job, which is to have a conservative accounting assessment. But I've seen those again and again, where it's like, man, the dire assessment, the dire projection is like, we're not going to have any money in this fund by the end of the year. And then you get to the end of the year, and everyone's a little under budget, and it looks like the fund's fine. And so I would just say that generally, and that's, and when we come to actually budgeting, we budgeted it, right? We budgeted, we, we made the cuts where it needed to be made, that they were budgeted for other items, and so we, we cut in those areas, and we rebudgeted towards, towards, towards the street fund. So that's, that's all I'm advocating for, is a general operating principle that was similar to last year, that we did end up agreeing on, which was around 300,000 that, that goes towards it. But I just think, actually, this is a really helpful exchange, because I think it helps clarify kind of what, what the differences are and where, and where that, and where the, and where kind of the ideologies are at, yeah.
Counsel President?
Counsel McGowan?
I think, I agree with the, I agree with the idea of, of taking the stance, and maybe it's just not necessarily written policy, but just kind of, you know, the general stance we take. But if I remember correctly, those cuts that we made weren't all necessarily ongoing expenditures. They were kind of one-time expenditures that were planned for this particular year. And there's no guarantee going forward that we're going to be able to find that $300,000 next year. You know, we would have to look at other items. There are going to be completely separate items in the budget that aren't going to show up like they did last year. So I, I agree with the idea that, that we can always look and try to prioritize and try to find that money, but to try to make some hard and fast plan that we're going to have, we're going to take $300,000 out of the general budget no matter what every year, is just not reasonable to take that approach. And maybe that's not exactly what you're saying, and I understand that, but I, I just think those, those expenditures that we cut weren't ongoing annual, you know, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't an FTE that we cut, it wasn't a, something like that where we could plan on that money being there every year after year after year. So that, that was my only thought on that, because we're, and there's no guarantee that we'll be able to find that $300,000 again.
Counsel President?
Counsel Oort?
I don't have necessarily an idea of like how much that should be, but I do feel that we don't have right now money to, we're not setting that money aside in our general fund. And so when we say that the streets are important to us, when I said that's why I ran, when I decided to run again, and I decided, and I looked and I said, am I, do I want to run again? Why did I run in the first place? My job's not done here, and it's because of the streets. And if we say it's important, we need to have money that we set aside each year from our general fund to go to the streets. We have money that our utilities pay in franchise fees specifically because they run their, their equipment, they tear up our streets, it's specifically for our streets. And I'm not saying that all that money needs to go there, but I would, would argue that a, a fraction of that money should be going specifically to our streets. And also, I'm trying to think, um, we, I, I'm a big proponent of the pool. I talk about it all the time. I love our pool. I want to keep our pool. We, we spend $150,000 from our general fund to run the pool. So it's, it's hard. We, we spent $40,000 the year prior and gave it out in grants. That's $200,000 right there every, every year that we're saying that we don't have from our general fund that could potentially go to our streets. I'm not saying that I want to shut down the pool. I'm just saying that we, we do have money, we just have to decide what our priorities are. And it's, it's important for us to have money set aside. It doesn't have to be 300,000. Maybe that is too, you know, that's being, if, if that is too much of a risk to say, okay, we're going to do this every year, but we should do, we should do something. That's a gesture to say the money that our citizens gave us in their property taxes, that also includes the, the franchise fees, those, those monies are going to go towards our roads. Before we ask them for more money and on another, on another fee.
Counsel President?
Counsel Julia?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that Counsel Oort said. I, I think this is, this is the crux of the issue for me, right? Is that we have to spend more money to fix streets, and we are in a conservative community that is against more taxes, right? And that is what we're trying to do. So that is a hard lift wherever you're at. You have to value the values of your community, which are for better streets, but they are also for low taxes and not continuing to raise rates. And so to me, what that means, that means that you have to prioritize it within the budget. And what I would just say is this, it really only takes a few years to develop that, to develop that culture within the budget-making process. To say, okay, we know already going into this year that this is, this has been prioritized before, this is going to be prioritized again. It's similar to the facilities budget that we cut fully last year, which is, which was $100,000, something like $100,000 that was being paid to facilities budget for a future city hall. That was cut, and that was an ongoing expense that was cut, and now it's directed towards streets. And so those are the type of expenses that had previously been built into the culture that now we're saying, no, we are shifting culture, we're shifting priorities to say, this is what matters most. And I, I think that ultimately, you can say something matters the most, but what, what it really looks like is when you look at your budget, that's what really like tells that story. And so like ultimately, I, I agree with Counsel Oort, and I think that we want to have, I'm not saying we want to have like the letter of a law or a full-on like code, you know, thing that ties the hands of future councils or future budget committees, or prevents, prevents us from making other decisions in the cases of emergency. But when it comes to our general operating principle, I think we need to have a high standard for the way that we budget within the general, the general fund.
Mayor Protim?
Counsel Patty?
Thank you so much. So I, I have a couple of questions, and I think this is going to be instrumental in kind of making my point here. So earlier I heard Counsel Oort say that she would like to see a portion of maybe the franchise fees go towards this. All right, so the last budgetary year, we have 744,000. So just so I can kind of understand, would you be comfortable just seeing like a percentage of that year over year be dedicated towards what we're talking about here, or is it, okay? And you're nodding in response, and so, okay. So with that in mind, you know, where do, where do these revenues go, city staff? And what will we be limited in doing if we were to dedicate a portion of our franchise fees to that? I guess is my question before we move forward with this discussion.
They go to the general fund, and so it would be limiting things in the general fund. And I don't know, I mean, we, we would have to, if that is, if we get clear direction, policy direction from the council on that, then we would prepare the budget with that in mind. I don't know what that would look like at this point. You know, there, there would likely be impacts, cuts that, you know, it might not, and I don't know what those are, I don't know the amount, so it's really hard to say. My, I guess my, my thought is I, I'm hearing a lot of things, and we talked a little bit about this at a, at the work session, is we can come back with some recommendations, some options, some thoughts. I'd certainly want to have James give some more input on what that might look like if we were to do a percentage, and what that might, what, what that, you know, what we might be comfortable with if we were to allocate a percentage. And that, and I guess my, that doesn't mean that that's it either. It doesn't mean that from year to year, there can't be more that goes towards streets, or we suddenly have an influx of funding because of grants, or, you know, there, there could be other things, but if there's some commitment that a percentage is going to be thought about in the, the budget, I'm sure we could do that. I would, I would hope it wouldn't be 50%, you know, based on, on the amount that you're saying, but you know, if there's a smaller amount that's a, a gesture in exchange for fee increases, you know, that's, that's something that could, you know, we could play with. So my, what I was hearing is that we want a strategy for street improvement funding that includes fee increases, potential general fund contribution, and what that amount is, I'm sure will be hotly debated, grants and urban renewal. And I think that we could bring something forward that does that. The challenge is, is that that alone still may not get us where we really want to be, you know? And so I don't, you know, you could throw a million dollars, $2 million a year at us, and we still have a large deferred maintenance. So we're going to have to just do the best we can with what we have and know that that can change over time. So that, yeah, that's, that's the hope. And I guess I would also, on that vein, say, I think the idea of a street commission is, you know, a very good idea. I think that's something that could get some traction and involvement. I hope that we wouldn't wait on key decisions that we need to make on street fees and funding and moving other things forward, because that could take ti, you know, like that could take time just to pull together, to have the, the background, the knowledge, the information, the staffing. So it's like, we need to, we need to move forward, even if we're not getting where we ultimately want to go. We need to not, we've already been talking about this for way longer than I am proud of, you know? So I'll just leave that there, too.
Julia, I was going to say something. As far as the priorities, I do think the, the street fee should be the initial and to get the ball moving with that, you know, with the extra funds there. And the urban renewal area, I like that as a second. And I know, I would definitely stand up before the budget committee again, I, I know Counsel Julia would, and, you know, push for at least something. We need to put something from the general fund forward towards the, towards streets if we're, you know, if we're in this situation that we're in. But, you know, to justify the street fee increase, we do definitely need to put some money. If we have to make cuts somewhere else, then so be it, maybe we have to make cuts somewhere else. So I definitely agree with Counsel Julia on that, that we should have money coming from the general fund towards, towards streets. Maybe it's $150,000, but you know, it's, maybe it's 500,000, I don't know, it depends on what we can afford, so that's just my thoughts.
Counsel Oort?
Thank you. Okay, so let's say that we did raise the fee to $10. How long is that going, how, how long is that $10 going to take us before we need to raise the fee again? Because I can't, I don't know if we have that. I know that we've had that chart. That's been kind of my, the source of contention with this fee is that it's never going to, it's like a never-ending, it's never going to be enough, we, we need to raise it up to...
So, but as a, as a reminder, so what, when we did this initial assessment, it was really just looking at fees. It wasn't looking at fees in general fund, fees in urban renewal, fees in grants. So I bring it up just as a reminder of why we're even here, is that this wasn't acceptable, and we, we needed to dig deeper. And I feel like we've learned, as, you know, staff and council, we've kind of learned and discussed and thought of more over time. So we might never get there now because we're doing different things, we, you know, so I'll just, there's that. But to answer your question, so if we were looking at option D, ramp up to 2.5 million, that's basically where, the, raising it to 10 is there, basically. And then basically, that's where we would be for '23, '24 fiscal year. But that's better than where we're at right now. I mean, that's, so if we don't raise the rates, we have $180,000 a year. If we raise the rates, we have more.
Mayor Protim?
Counsel Julia?
But I just, I do want to point this out, because this, this is like ultimately the reason why general fund dollars and why there has to be alternative sources, and why I've been hesitant to actually say this is the first step we need to take. Because, because, because by fiscal year 2026, it's at $60, right? Every month. So to me, it's like, no, I'm, I'm okay saying, let's go to 10. I'm okay even going to like 15 someday, right? But what, what, that, those are hard decisions, those are hard raises. Like, there's no way I will ever go to $60, right? No way I'll ever go to $40. No way I'm probably ever going to go to $20, right? And so the point is, is that even within this structure, we cannot accomplish what like the desire is and what the hope is, which is why if, if, if I'm asked to make a hard decision about saying, okay, let's go to $20, let's go to $15, I'm asking other hard decisions to be made, right? And, and that's where I've always found, well, we have to cut something somewhere. Well, yes, that's the point. We do have to cut something somewhere because streets are essential.
So I feel like I've gotten So I feel like I've gotten some good input. I have some thoughts and ideas of how we can move something forward that will be an action plan that does not commit you to $60 in 2026, but moves us forward. So I will, I will work on that and get something presented. I guess as I'm doing that, I'm hearing 10 to 15, 10 to 12. I mean, how bold do you want me to be when I put something forward? 16.
I'm for 10.
10.
I wouldn't be for above 10.
Council McDowell.
I think all along I've said, I've said 10. I'm okay with it, even a little higher than that, 12. I think what this dataset and all these options we got previously said to me was that we have to take a multi-pronged approach. No one solution is going to give us all the funds that we need. We can't not raise the street fee. We can't. We can't probably not do three to four different things all simultaneously, or eventually, to get where we need to be or where we want to be. That's going to include all these things. The street fee is like the simplest, quickest, kind of most, we've been talking about this for so long, and now like, again, we started this two years ago, and we've essentially gotten a $2 increase to the street fee. This kind of, I understand the need for the debate and public input and stuff, but this kind of stuff, it kind of, it just delays the process, and I understand this, I'm coming at this from a point of like, I chose not to run for reelection, so maybe I'm being a little more bold than I would normally be, but we got to get, we got to do it all. And in order, in order for us to get to a place where our people say, yeah, state and streets are great, like they're in relatively great shape compared to other municipalities, we have to take an all-of-the-above approach. So, yeah, $10, $12, I think that's a good starting point. See, that gets, that lets us, if we do that, that's a question I have, I guess, is if we, if we agree on $10 or $12, whatever it is, and we say go, what's, how long does that process take to actually get that implemented?
Not long. I mean, it would be a resolution, amending the fee schedule to do that, and then it would go into effect. I mean, we'd probably want to do some, some notice to people so they don't just suddenly get a, you know, so there'd probably be some outreach similar to when we do any fee, fee update. So, yeah, we, that, it doesn't necessarily take a long time. You can delay the implementation, you could do it immediately.
Okay. I'm just going to advocate for using every tool in the tool belt, because this problem, there's no one silver bullet, there's no one solution that's going to provide everything we're looking for. You know, the next budget committee, which I'm not going to be on, is going to have, be able to make their own decisions and their own priorities, and I'm okay with stating whatever you guys want to stay here, but I don't want to let that delay the other things that we need to do sooner than that.
Council Julia.
I am in agreement with that, like I am 100% in agreement that it needs to be an all-and-above the approach. Like, I agree with that. I think that is true. I think that, yeah, I think that is true. I just think that, I just want some stated, right, if that's a general agreement, that we're like, we're heading in that direction, this is, this is what we, this is the plan, right? This is what we're going to be doing, we're going to be budgeting, this is going to be a priority as we budget. And ultimately, like, yes, the budget committee has their thing, but we are the ultimate authority when it comes to budget as well. As long as that is the stated goal, the stated purpose, that's our direction and aim and purpose going into that, like, I don't need, I don't need to say that that had, like, we need to have had a vote on the next budget before I'm willing to go on this. What I'm wanting is that general consensus, that general policy direction of saying, yeah, this is the plan, this is what we're, this is what we're going to be prioritizing heading into budget, that's the direction we're going to be giving staff, and that, and now we can pull the trigger on, on the fee.
So I have, I have good information, I envisioning a well-worded and wordy resolution that addresses all of your concerns and thoughts, so, soon, so that we can move forward, so look for that.
Sorry, Mayor Protem. I don't know, can we, can we acknowledge additional public comment, or no?
As long as the rest of the council is okay with hearing additional comment, I'm perfectly fine with it. Come on up.
Aaron Frickel. I just really want to thank you for addressing the situation. I think that the more that you can consider it an emergency, and think about it in that sense, because I, this process has been going for years, and I don't remember the original assessment of how long it would take to actually get our roads into decent shape. It was over 100 years, I think, I think that was the number. And I still have that in the back of my head, that this is still an emergency that is not being addressed. And so I appreciate the idea that we need to use all the tools in the toolbox, but one thing that I do not hear being addressed also is the fact that certain things are, get more expensive. Like, if you don't address them now, those things become exponentially more expensive. And then that is an additional problem to have to deal with going on down the road. So if there's a way to assess those and to understand, okay, if we don't do the sewer improvement on this part, or something like that, that that's going to actually make a huge difference in the planning going forward. So I would love it if there was a way to determine that perhaps with, with a volunteer board that would be willing to do that. I think that the more that we can stop with, with the constant assessment organizations that are doing this over the years, and we actually consider this an emergency, and buckle down and actually get it done so that the costs don't continue to rise and make it worse. Thank you.
Council Julia.
I just wanted to say, if we have a resolution next, like, next council, or in, even if we are heading towards that, and there's a general agreement, even, even tonight, if there is a general agreement that we are on, I mean, I guess even an agreement for the majority, which I think we would have an agreement on the majority, although we don't know, it's going to be the majority in the future, is, but I'm sure by the time, yeah, we're going to have it before the new council gets sworn in. But if we're, if we're in a general agreement about like, hey, we're going to prioritize finding dollars in the general fund, like that is going to be a priority, we're going to have a resolution that backs that up, and we can talk about the fine toothpick, I would be, I'm good, like, moving forward when it comes to like fee adjustments. So if, if that is, if that is a decision that's like even wanting to be moved forward to tonight, like, I'm good if, if that multi-prong, we're going to do it all approach is, is the strategy, is, is what's being talked about, then, yeah, then I'm fine, you know, taking my head or whatever, you know.
Council President Sims. If I may, I just wanted to, so I'm not asking for you to make any decisions this evening. I was looking for direction, and it probably would be not good if you did take any action just because we want to do it by resolution, and it wasn't noticed on the agenda. I will say, just, just as a reminder, you know, we do have from GRI a list of every single street in the city, what their current condition is and what they're projected in five years, I mean, what their projected deterioration is based on the condition they're in. And we've really been talking about the rehabilitation and reconstruction projects. We also have the maintenance projects that are sort of being dealt with in a different pot, because what Mr. Frickel said is absolutely true. If we don't take care of the roads that are currently in good and very good condition, it will be exponentially more expensive to fix them, and so we want to keep those in good condition. And so that, those dollars are being addressed through the maintenance dollar pot, and really what we're talking about is the rehabilitation and reconstruction pot, which also, you know, in that vein, the rehabilitation is less expensive to fix than the reconstruction, exponentially so. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
So did we answer all your questions that you have that you need to move forward?
No, but you answered enough of them. You answered the most important one, which is the roads for this fiscal year. You've given me really good direction, and I will work on getting a resolution for you to consider adopting that includes a fee increase. I think the prioritization and the CIP, maybe that is best addressed further in another work session, where maybe we also discuss a, a commission to advise on that. That those two potentially can wait even a little bit longer, really these, the other ones are more urgent. So you've dealt with what I needed you to deal with.
Okay, yeah, that'd probably be a good topic for a work session, for those other things that you're asking. All right. So is there any more comments about this? Are we all done? All right. Communications from city staff. You're waiting for that, right?
Well, yeah, and I'm sorry, I do have quite a few. So first, what?
She's going to have a big moment.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, oh, that's funny. So first, I just wanted to note Operation Green Light. We have talked about that the past couple of years. If you remember, I think two years ago, I gave counselors that were on the council then, green lights. But Operation Green Light will be November 4th, leading up to Veterans Day on November 11th. We've coordinated with Cub Scout Troop 7050 to present the flag ceremony for council at the November 4th meeting. We will be announcing staten's participation in Operation Green Light on all social media, through the newsletter, city updates, and things like that. And just as a reminder, Operation Green Light is a national initiative honoring and supporting veterans. From November 4th through the 11th, State and City Hall and other prominent buildings will be illuminated in green, serving as a beacon of gratitude and recognition for our veterans. We encourage all residents and businesses to participate by placing a green light in their windows, or using a green bulb in their outdoor lighting. So we'll be participating and trying to get the word out about that again this year. Just as a note, you received a memo from Ross to the city council. That was confidential attorney-client communication. But if you have further questions that you want me to ask of him, or you want me to schedule an executive session, please let me know. You don't have to do that here, but I just wanted to note that. Republic Services is having their Bulky Waste Event this Saturday from 9 to 2. I think you, some of you, I mentioned already, so Council President Sims and I were at the League of Oregon Cities Conference this past Thursday through Saturday. I got a lot of great information, learned more about AI, it's going to take over the world. But I also got you guys some really fun stickers, so that was, that's where that came from, the little counselors are magical. I only picked up one, I became a counselor for the fame, money and fame, so you guys are, I don't know why I only got one of those, but if somebody wants it, you can have it. I also wanted to note, just Mr. Hayes came up and spoke, and I appreciate anybody that comes up and provides public comments, but I just want to remind him as well as anybody else, that if you see something that needs fixing, you don't have to wait for the council meeting to come and share that, you can let city staff know, and we'll hopefully take care of it, or at least note it, so you don't have to wait for every two weeks to come and talk. And then last but not least, I have asked Melanie to give an update on the holiday tree lighting. She's leading the organizing of that, and she has some updates as well as question for council.
More like a request, but I'll start you on the fun first. So typically, the Holiday Fest and tree lighting ceremony is put on exclusively by RDS. But this year, we're working alongside RDS to add some really fun components to it and bring a little bit more of the community together and, and branch out a little bit. So Holiday Fest officially kicks off on the day after Thanksgiving, November 29th. RDS is planning their usual sleigh rides and Santa, hot chocolate, in their festive commemorative cups, and it's expected to be a lot of fun this year, again. The following day is Small Business Saturday, and in order to help increase the excitement and just bring more people out for Small Business Saturday, the city is sponsoring a first responders tree decorating event, where we'll have state and PD, state and fire department, and Santam Hospital all onsite with their emergency vehicles and staff, working together to make decorations with the community, and the ladder truck will be there with the fire department hanging the ornaments on the tree as they're being made. Also, the library on Tuesday and Wednesday prior to that will have some decorations onsite there for anybody that wants to make them in advance or take them home, just to increase the fun a little bit. Let's see, the grand finale is going to be the following Saturday, December 3rd. Sorry, December 6th, and Friday, not Saturday. We will be kicking off the library light festival that will run for the month of December, but the unveiling will be that evening at 5 o'clock. And we will then be having a walk from the library through downtown to the parking lot where the tree will be, and the, all of the street will be lit and joyous and fun, and lots of the stores out making noise and handing out candy canes and just making it fun for everybody. The tree lighting will also have local talent performer, performing arts from the local schools, local organizations that, that do a lot of fun stuff within the community. So we're trying to get all the families out, everybody out to have a good time, but this is where you guys come in. We're really hoping that you guys will be at all of the events, but specifically, would love it if you guys would be able to lead the march from the library down to the tree, and just kind of lead the community through our downtown area. Questions if you have them?
Did you find a choir for the tree lighting?
We have a couple of different people that are very interested. I'm still continuing meetings with them, but I know that you have somebody in mind, and I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, I didn't know if the Oregon Spirit Choir contacted you or not.
Not yet, no, but I'd love to hear from them if they're interested.
Okay, yeah, they're pretty, they're good.
Yeah, cool. That sounds awesome. I'm in, I'll do it. Yes.
Yeah, I will, too.
Love it. Thank you, guys. Great job with that.
I'll also add, now that you have, have agreed to that, Julie Boxler actually proposed a letter that, but we wanted to make sure that you guys were willing to lead the march before we invited others to join in on the march. Basically, to all the different clubs and organizations, to encourage them to walk with us, and I think, again, that will be a really neat way to just bring in all the community. And so, super exciting, and I'm glad Erin's still here. Thank you to RDS for willing, you know, allowing us to kind of join in on the fun and expand upon it, so I'm super excited.
I have a quick question. What time is it again, on the 6th?
The library event starts at 5 o'clock, and we'll start the walk through downtown roughly 5:30.
All right, thanks.
That is all I have.
That is all.
I got one more, one more thing, if I could.
Council McDowell.
I just wanted to, I forgot about it last meeting, but I wanted to give a little bit of props to Julia for helping to address the visibility issue at Gardner and Shaft, right in front of the middle school there. I noticed they did, the property managers did take out a bunch of bushes there on the corner, and it has vastly improved the visibility on that intersection, which I think is especially important because of how much traffic goes in and out during school drop-off and, and school-out time. So thanks, thanks for nagging them, however much you did.
I think the one thing I was going to say is, I brought back the priority list from the League of Oregon Cities for everybody to take a look at. Looked like everything we were talking about. Looked like everything we were talking about is on there, I believe. But, yeah, it was pretty interesting. The conference was good. They talked about some good stuff. There's some reforms that they were looking about, at doing and they're looking at some initiatives to looking at stabilizing funding sources for the cities and property tax reform. They're going to put that out in December. So, that looked pretty interesting. And they were attempting to change HB 3115, which is the codification of grants passed versus Johnson here in Oregon. And that way, we could give the power back to the cities is what they're really looking at. That was one thing that stuck out, one of the meetings I went to that really stuck out to me. And they had some pretty good lobbying, lobbying efforts to accountability for Measure 110, that was one of their lobbying, lobbying efforts. And the recreational immunity was another one that was pretty important, so we don't get sued for people in our park, you know, tripping in our parks. But I, those are just a few things. I don't want to talk too long because this has gone on long enough, but, but if anybody has any questions about the, the conference, I can definitely answer them. Does anybody else have anything else they wanted to say?
I did. Counsel Sims. I just had a question that Aaron Frickel brought up about the parking spots. And can you speak to that? I'm just curious. When that happened and what's going on?
Yeah, that happened last week and it's been something actually that's been discussed for quite a long time. Like, before I even got here, there'd been some discussion of it. And we, we did some restriping and it was like, oh, let's just do this now. Essentially, it, what, the way it used to work was that you would go into the police and employee lot off of Third Avenue. But what would happen is the way the, the spaces were, the police would have to like basically either pull in, which isn't the best thing for first responders because then if they need to leave quickly, they have to like back up and then go, or they have to do almost a three-point turn to get backed into the spot. And there were some safety issues with exiting. My understanding is CIS actually recommended reversing the, the parking a while ago. And so, we, we took that opportunity. In doing that, we needed to retain an ADA space because it's a parking lot and you have to have an ADA space. And just the, the way it, it worked and the layout, we ended up losing, there were two public parking spots kind of closest to Third. And I talked with, with Aaron. It's a, it's a city, you know, it's a police city employee lot. It didn't occur to me frankly that it was a public lot. It wasn't like the Florence Street Parking Lot or, or one of the other public lots. You know, and there's a lot of on-street parking, so it, it frankly did not occur to me to do more of an outreach effort. We did notify the cinema because they, they're, some of their employees parked back there and we didn't want them to be caught off guard and made sure all of our staff knew so they didn't go in the wrong way one day, but we didn't, we didn't do the notification. And so, that's, that's what, that's about. But it's, like I said, the lot primarily is for city police and employees to a lesser extent, but it's really, they need to be able to park, get in, get out safely and quickly.
Can I have a follow-up to that? So, you changed the, so you cannot go, is it like an exit only now?
So, you, and, right, so you enter off of Ida now and you exit off of, or onto Third, whereas before you would enter off of Third and exit off of Ida.
And then you, the police cars park backwards?
So, basically, when they come in from Ida, then they can just, they pull forward and back in versus the, just the way the spaces were striped. I, I'm not explaining it very well, but they would, they had to like
I got you.
Almost turn around.
But then you also have to, so is the, is the ADA parking, is that still a public spot?
Yes. And, and frankly, the public can park in the back, not during business hours. There's signs that basically says, you know, it's employee parking only between 8 and 5. So, there are certainly residents in nearby homes that, that park there overnight.
Okay.
Oh, yes, it also gained, there, there was some additional street parking that was gained in front of City Hall. And then I actually have asked the Public Works staff that next, next year, when we'd have the, the striping contractor go out and repaint before we do that, I want them to look more closely at the spaces on the streets because, again, in talking with Aaron, I think there's some opportunities in front of his building across from Wolfgang's. There might be some opportunities to pick up some additional on-street parking, just based on the way the striping was. I think it sounds like where the parklet was, maybe there wasn't some, some spaces striped. So, I've asked them to like look, look more closely at, you know, do we, are we maximizing the on-street parking as best we can, especially further down Third?
Mayor Protam?
Counsel Julia.
So, I'm just, that, so that's different than the de-escalation training. That would be different than, or did he say, was that related in terms of de-escalation when it comes to like city staff?
He was a little upset. And I don't know if maybe staff didn't interact well with him and that didn't help him de-escalate and that may be what he's referring to.
Yeah, so I think from that perspective, I'd like to just know a little bit more about that situation and how that, I don't know, that interaction was handled or, yeah, if there are any opportunities for?
Yeah, I certainly can talk to him more because I, I hadn't heard that. I, I certainly met with him. I, he was upset. He came in, he talked with some City Hall staff, he talked with Public Works staff. He was upset. I came back from lunch and heard about it, met him outside, we talked. I think that we de-escalated, I, I think.
You did a great job.
So, I need to find out more about his perception of kind of what happened at the staff level and whether or not there's opportunities there. So, we'll definitely talk, so.
Great, thank you.
Time is 8:58. We're adjourned.